A very good evening to everyone in India and a very good late afternoon to everyone in the Middle East. Welcome back to yet another one of our base camp sessions that we've been conducting as we lead up to the summit as all base camps should be. So this has been a wonderful series of sessions for us, very revelatory as well about just the way technical analysis forms this common language to connect all the regions across the Asia Pacific as well as around the world in this common language which we use to make sense from the markets. And so without much, much ado, let me bring on board our first speaker for the day, the wonderful Milan Mashdab, CMT MSTA. Milan is the founder and chief market strategist for Gemstone Equities and has been a constant CMT volunteer and contributor for the past four years now since we've had a formal presence in India. Let me bring Milan on board and a very good evening Milan, thank you so much. So good to see you here.
Good evening Joel, it's, it's really wonderful to be here again. Thank you.
And Milan, so we are all looking forward to your comments today. Let me just pull up your slides and I shall make myself scarce and hand the stage over to you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Alright, so good evening everyone, good evening friends. It's, it feels so wonderful to be back here. It's been quite long that I've connected with anyone on any event because of the obvious reasons, two years we were just reduced to being seen on the screen. And in November, that makes me really excited to see all of you here in Mumbai in the in-person event. So that is something, whatever is happening is happening quite wonderful. I think we would be meeting almost after a gap of three years. So with that, today's session, I tried to keep it more, more, less predictive in nature and more analytical in nature. I'll just walk you through a couple of charts and my focus would be to just, you know, a kind of a situational awareness kind of things which will, which will help us navigate the troubled waters that markets are right now. But before I move on to the charts, I would encourage all of you to please register for the in-person summit or the virtual one. It would be wonderful to see all of you there. I cannot wait. I've, it's less than a month to go and it would be wonderful to see all of you there. So with that, I welcome everyone here once again with a good morning to all of you who have joined me from the US. And good evening to all the friends who are joining from India, South Asia and, and the Middle East. So with that, let me begin. Just a brief introduction about myself. I'm, I'm basically functioning as an independent research analyst for over 20 years now. And through Gemstone Equity Research, we provide India-focused technical research in the, for the Indian markets. And through Chart Wizard app study which is incorporated in the UE, we, we deliver US and UK focused research. As well as we, we also cover a few of the international commodities. So apart from, apart from this, I am a regular, regular contributor to the Economic Times. We, I write daily for the Economic Times and also conduct live streams on Economic Times. And apart from being a featured commentator on stockcharts.com, I have had the privilege of contributing very frequently to our own CMT Association's newsletter along with a couple of other financial media. So in this session, we would be looking at a couple of charts and we would be looking at key levels that we will keep in mind as we go ahead and complete this quarter. A couple of months down the line and, and, and we will just try and define the four corners within which we'll have to navigate ourselves through this turbulent market landscape. So right now, we see that equity markets are in turmoil and fortunately for the better, India has remained one of the best relative perform, best relative performer within the region as well as globally. Except as we go ahead, I'll show you the relative comparison chart that except for the straits, the Singapore index trades times that has relatively outperformed the Nifty. India has been the best performing markets globally. I just repeat for the sake of better understanding that nothing in the session is likely to stay predictive in nature. I will not be forecasting the market levels. I will not be forecasting the stocks that we must should be investing in, the sectors we should be looking at. But I keep it more, I will try and keep it more analytically in nature so that we can, what I would say, we can, you know, responsibly react to the market developments going ahead, keeping the broader levels in mind. Apart from this, we have seen dollar index testing its 20, 22-year high. It tested almost a high of 114.50 and since then it has retraced a bit. We have seen this, we have seen the resultant effect on the commodities and metals. We have seen gold, almost seeing a near vertical drop on the day. The repo rates, sorry, the Fed rates were, were high. After that, there has been some stabilization, some stabilization in the rates once the dollar index returns. But it had a very bad resultant effect on the commodities and the base metal prices as well. With the slew of red hikes by the Fed, the central banks across the world are following the footsteps. We have seen Bank of England raising the rates. Many other central banks have raised the rates, including that of India, which, which has seen the most latest increase of 50 basis points in the, in the repo rate. So while the Fed has raised the rates, all other central banks are keeping pace with the Fed as well. And in fact geopolitical conflict that was the first event that started in February that had disrupted the calm in the financial markets which were very, which were enjoying a very, you know, sound and peaceful existence in the first two months of this calendar year. Apart from that, inflation worries are nagging the markets. There are global recession fears and we have also seen crude prices. I think, yeah, we have also seen crude prices posting their largest weekly gains since the month of March. We saw the Brent crude rising almost, almost 11% plus for, as of weekend ending this Friday. Whereas the Namex crude sharply rose by over 15% this week. Inflation worries, as I just mentioned, are continuing to haunt the markets and so are the recession fears. Recession is something that we always see in the hindsight. Some, some mild effects of the recession might be seen, might hope, we might be seeing them right now. And but there's always a deep time when an actual recession takes place where, where it is forecasted to be in the first half of 2023. And there are also fears that the overall, the corporate earnings will take a, take a serious hit to eight to 10 percentage points because of this. And these are the fears and these are the, and, and inflation, since it is practically going out of control in many developed as well as the emerging economies, there is a slew of debate that is going on whether to raise, you know, raising the rates while not compromising on the growth and this and that. But ultimately, raising interest rates will have its own obvious effect of dissipation of growth if, if not a negative growth. And, and we have S and P 500, which is hovering around its major crucial supports. And it, it's holding up against an uncertain feature, future from a technical perspective. So right now, I will just walk you through a couple of charts and we, and we will see how and where they are placed. And, and, and what we can expect the markets to do, the global markets to do, what can we expect the Indian markets to do in return? And what are the broad levels that we should be looking at? To begin with, I would like to take a relative comparison view of the markets. The one plotted in the thick blue line is the Nifty 50 index, the Indian benchmark. And we see that this is on year-to-date basis and as of Friday closing, October 7th closing, a Nifty has written a negative returns of 1.76%. In fact, across all major global markets, straight times is the only index which has stayed in the positive and has returned a positive return of 0.37%. Next comes India at minus 1.76%. Now, if we compare to other, we don't have much comparable indexes within South Asia. But if you still talk about the Pakistan index, it has written a negative of 6.24%. But if you look at the other Asian indexes such as Nikkei, Nikkei and, and Hang Seng, both have returned minus 7.46% and minus 23.78% respectively. Now, India and the US markets have obviously been very highly correlated markets. But even that relative performance has been vastly different in this calendar year. While Nifty has written a negative of just 1.76%, something like a Dow Jones has written negative of 19.92%. Nasdaq minus, one of the worst performing index, Nasdaq has written minus 32% and S and P, the, the broader US market index has written a 24.12% in negative. So this relative performance charts, relative comparison chart makes it, makes it amply clear that India has by far remained one of the best globally, globally performing markets on the relative terms across continents. Be it, be it the European indexes like Fursi which has returned a negative of 6.85%, be it the US markets or be it the rest of the major Asian indices like Hang Seng and Nikkei. It is only the straits that has performed better with, against the Nifty. Dollar index, as I just said, this is the long-term monthly chart of dollar index. The levels that we need to watch now would be the most immediate high point of 114.557. And we see that this is a long-term monthly chart and see how wonderfully the basic rudimentary concept of trend lines has worked quite well with the dollar index. We see the trend lines providing resistance to the dollar index, extended ones providing the support. And we see that the, the most immediate high point ever, if, except of the 160s, 160 levels that were seen in 1984 or 85, 118.8 is the worst, worst test in your dollar index may test. But before that, it will have a major resistance in form of this upward rising trend line. And therefore, the levels of 114 is something that we will need to watch for the dollar index. Again, it steps, it stays steeply or bot, but it's a different thing because there are more than one factors that affect the moves into dollar index. But this is, these are the levels that we need to keep in mind, 114 odd levels and higher for the dollar index may spell bad for the equities, for the commodities, for the, for the base metal prices and, and, and generally the rest of the currencies across the globe. Then comes the gold. It is highly ironical that gold is considered as a natural hedge against the inflation. And when we are fighting one of the worst inflationary times, this truth has pretty much become useless because of the strength of the US dollar which has, which has played the spoil spot when it comes to the performance of gold. Right now, we have seen gold marking a classical double top near 2060 levels and has been trending, trending in a broad trading range of say around 1700 to 2060, 1700 on the lower side and 2060 on the higher side. And it has seen itself mildly violating this lower edge of 17, 1700 levels. However, at the same point in time, there are two factors that can, that can see gold showing some sort of stabilization or some attempt to stabilize and some attempt to show a technical pullback. The first one would be the retracement in dollar index. At least if the dollar index stops rising, the way it has been rising nowadays. If it stops rising and shows some, some, some sort of retraction towards 112, 111 or below 111 levels, we might see gold entering again into this broad trading range by moving above 1700 levels. Secondly, we, it's also, we see on the chart that there has been a small bullish divergence of the RSI against the price while the prices made a lower tops, sorry, lower bottoms, the RSI did not. And this has resulted into formation of a bullish divergence. So at least what I believe is that if, if, if there are some, some, some external help, excuse me, that comes from the dollar index where it at least ceases to rise or even favorably retraces from the current level. And if the prices are able to move above 1700 and sustain above 1700, we might see gold attempting to stabilize itself. So 1700 levels is something that we need to keep an eye so far as the gold prices are concerned. Now I'll move to the crude oil. Crude oil, this is something quite interesting that I would like to show you is that the importance of 40-week MA. 40-week moving average of crude. There was a, there was a positive crossover of 20-week moving average crossing above 40-week moving average. So that being said, the price moved above the 40-week moving average was sometime in November 2020, where the price of Brent crude was close to $41 and that was the most immediate history that we can see when the price moved above the 40-week MA. So since then, till the high point seen because of the conflict that started between Ukraine and Russia and the prices of $137 were seen, there was a 248% increase in crude price after it, after it crossed above the 40-week MA. Now during this course of time, there were two instances where the prices retreated and took support on the 40-week MA. So that was the first time, the first support at 40-week MA was seen around this level that was something 60-plus levels. And once it took, once it took support on 40, on the 40-week moving average, it's so some appreciation of close to 35% in, in couple of weeks' time. Again, a downside or some retraction of the prices were seen. Again, the crew took support at 40-week MA. Since then, to the high of $137 odd dollars, it saw a move of close to 84%. So what I'm trying to drive home a point is the importance of 40-week moving average. Where after the first crossover of the price above that moving average, a total of 248% price appreciation was seen. And after, and in the meantime, during this journey, there were two instances where it took support on 40-week MA. And each support saw a subsequent rally of 35% and 84% in the crude prices over the following weeks. Now that 40-week moving average, it was in August 5th for the week ending August 5th. The prices went below the 40-week MA. Since then, they are trending lower than the 40-week MA. And we have also seen a negative crossover of 10-week moving average, crossing below 40-week moving average. And therefore, we can place the most immediate resistance for, for the crude. I'm, I'm talking about the Brent crude at 102.90, that is 103 levels. So what I'm trying to drive home a point is the importance of 40-week MA. The way beautifully it has played out with the crude prices, it, that the first movement or first move of the price above that 40-week MA, so a massive value of 250% and two times the support that it take, so a significant appreciation of prices in, following that support. So once that support of 40 MA is violated, I expect it to act as a strong resistance. So expect a 103.90, a very crucial level to watch so far as the crude prices are concerned. Now I'll just replace this chart with a plain vanilla chart of crude. We have seen crude taking the support over this extended trend line which is placed at around 85 or approximately 85, 86 odd levels. So right now, crucial levels for the crude would be to watch its behavior vis a vis 103 levels over the coming weeks. I'll now move to the Middle East. Middle East as such, meanwhile, I would encourage all of you to put questions either on the Discord or wherever there is a provision to do so, I'll come to them once I'm done with my talks here. So this is, I'll move to the Middle East now. Middle East relatively has caught lesser liquid markets. Whether it is ADX index, that is Abu Dhabi index, Abu Dhabi general index or, or the other main financial market there is in Dubai, that is DFM, Dubai financial markets. This is the Dubai financial market general index on weekly timeframe. So that has also seen a secular, secular up move since the middle of 2020 and it marked its high around 3800 levels. So from the lows of 1700, 1800 zone to the high of 3800, this DFM general index has largely stayed in an upward rising channel. It is only in this middle of the year, just after May. The index ended up violating, violating this channel on the downside and on a very classical note, in a very classical manner, it has continued to resist the lower edge of that channel. That lower edge which it violated in the month of June or something approximately that. So right now, this index is seen clinging on to the 50-week moving average which is at 2423, so 2400 levels. I'm sorry, which is at triple 32, which is a triple 32 right now. So triple 32 levels are something that this Dubai financial market general index will have to closely watch in order to see whether it's, it gets weaker because it has already marked a lower top around this point. Moving on, recently there were measures by UE government, very, very concentrated measures by UE government to increase liquidity in their financial markets. And as a part of that, DFM Dubai financial markets have seen a couple of major IPOs, IPOs taking place. And it started with Deva, that is Dubai electricity and water supplier. And on expected lines, all these issues are getting quiet, oversubscribed, much on the expected lines. And their main motto or the main motive for the main purpose and objective is to infuse liquidity in these markets. So Dubai financial, Deva was the first IPO that ever hit the market. Right now, it is trading almost at their issue price. I think the issue price was around 2.4 or 2.45 dirhams. Right now, it is trading around 2.51 dirhams when, when I just made this charts. So right now, for any, any investor who is watching this Middle Eastern markets, I would recommend watching Deva and its levels around 2.55 to 2.60 levels. Any move about that might bring in momentum. And the most recent one to hit the IPO was Salik. It's a, it's a tall company if I put it in simple words. They collect tall across Dubai and UA. So that's the major, one of the major entrants which has just got listed. So we don't have much data to show, but for any, anybody looking for investment, any move above 2.3 in, in Salik would be a good point to enter. So anyone who is trading the Middle Eastern markets, they need to keep the, the value of 3300 on, on DFM general index, Dubai financial markets general index in mind. Any slip below that, any slip below that will confirm this level as a lower top and may see the index slipping further into the secondary down trend, secondary trend. Now I'll move back again, again to the Indian and the US markets. As, as evident from this relative comparison chart, Nifty has grossly outperformed the three key averages. That is Dow Jones, S and P 500, the broader one and Nasdaq one by a huge margin. That, the Nasdaq, S and P and Dow have lost around 32, 24 and 19% on YTD basis where Nifty sits on a negative returns of 1.76% as of close on Friday, October 7th. Now I'll move to the examination of the correlation of the Indian and US markets. Why I'm doing this is for the, for the general, general information that why there is a, I mean, when I, when I'm speaking on, on, on this live streaming daily almost on Economic Times, the most common question I keep getting is that, are we correlated to the US markets? Yes or no? And if yes, then how come we are not falling too much? How come US is falling too much? Why are we witnessing a gap ups and gap downs and why, why, why do we always have to watch the overnight global trade setup? And its effect on the X years before we go into our own markets? So the answer to this is pretty simple. First of all, that leads me to examine the correlation of Indian markets and the US one. We see that the lower pan represents the correlation of Nifty 52, S and P 500. We see that we are enjoying a strongly, strong positive correlation almost throughout the lifetime. Now the only reason that somebody is falling more and somebody is falling less, someone is rising more and someone is not rising on the expected lines, the answer lies to that in this chart, that is the relative strength line. So despite a strong positive correlation, it might happen that one market performs much better than the other one. And the answer to this would lie in the charts of relative strength. So this is the relative strength line of Nifty against S and P 500 again on the weekly timeframe. We see that it's in a steep uptrend, strong trend on the upside, well above its 50 period moving average. And, and, and something that has kept the Indian markets a largely resident markets as compared to, not only to the US market, but if we compare the RS line of Nifty against all the global markets, we will find it rising and in the, and in the upward rising trajectory. And therefore, this, this has bought a very strong relative performance of Indian markets vis a vis the rest of the global peers. Now I'll move to the key levels that we need to watch for Nifty over the coming days. This is the weekly chart. Now if you look at the weekly chart, where do you find the weakness? So the most of the noise that we are seeing is on the daily charts. A gap up on one day which, which gets sold into during the day, a gap down opening like today that we saw in the Indian markets which was subsequently bought into. And the day was, and the rest of the day was spent recording from the lower levels. Now if we eliminate all this noise from the daily chart and move to the weekly chart, all we see is that the Nifty has resisted the, one of the most significant pattern resistances that of a falling trend line. I call it significant because this trend line has begun from the high point of 18,600 and has joined the subsequent lower tops. Nifty has made a couple of attempts to move above this, but it has not been able to move. And, and over the last two weeks, it has taken support twice on the 20-week moving average which is at around 16,854 rounding it off to 850. So the key levels to watch for the Nifty would be that so long as Nifty is keeping its head above 16,850 levels, there is, there won't be any structural, you know, weakness on the chart so far as Nifty is concerned. Any move above 17, 7500 will, will bring in some more upward momentum in the Nifty, it will open up some more, more gaps on the upside. But on the lower side, so long as the low, lower edge of the support zone of 17,850 to 17,000, 16,850 is defended, all we will see would be a broad range consolidation and volatile moves and back and forth oscillation in between these two levels. That is 17,200 of the upper, 100 of the upper side, 16,850 on the lower side. And markets will continue to consolidate the way they are consolidating right now with inherently positive bias. We will need to worry about it, we will need to worry about Nifty only when it slips below 16,800 on a closing basis. S and P chart offers even more, you know, optimistic picture. It has ended up, there was a classical small double bottom supported 3640. However, it got violated and it made a lower top. But while that happened, not only the RSI has shown a bullish divergence against the price, but there is also a good support on closing basis at 3594. We'll round it off to 3590. There is no need to be precise to the last decimal. This 3590 is the 200-week moving average, 200-week moving average for S and P 500. So there are chances that even the global markets do not change their trend. So there are chances that even the global markets do not change their trend, even if they continue to remain and continue making lower tops, continue to remain in the downtrend, even then a technical pullback up to the levels of hundred uh uh weak moving average that is around forty one hundred or levels plus on S and P X cannot be ruled out. Even if there is a slightest attempt to stabilize, uh unless we have fresh negatives to deal with, it's a different thing. But right now, uh S and P five hundred is sitting at one of its major support and same thing, I say it in a different words. Any violation of three six nine zero levels on a closing basis will be little worrisome for this index. Uh moving back to India, these are the couple of sectors that the things that I would like to draw your attention on that. Uh we are seeing a very resilient performance from Nifty metal. It's uh rotating towards the leading quadrant, very firmly placed in the improving quadrant. But there are a couple of sectors that are in the lagging quadrant which warrant our attention. We have Nifty infra, Nifty P A C, uh Nifty Pharma is there, I T is there and energy, all of these uh uh groups are placed in the lagging quadrant, but what I need to draw your attention is that is the trajectory of the tail which is looking upward. So this means that they are sharply improving their relative perform uh their relative momentum against the broader markets and we will see some replacement of the leading sectors within the Indian context. So we need to keep a very close eye on the public center enterprises that is P A C, uh Nifty Pharma, uh sorry. Uh Nifty P A C Pharma, Infrastructure, Energy and I T. Despite being in the lagging quadrant, we will see some, we will see these groups trying to find a base for themselves, trying to end their consolidation, trying and 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 trying very hard to improve their relative performance within the uh within the broader market. So I would suggest that rather than scouting for the sector which are already in in inside the leading quadrant and now looking up to you know slightly slow down on the relative momentum front, I would like to focus on those sectors that even though they are right now in the lagging quadrant, but they are seeing sharply improving their relative uh momentum against the broader market. So these are the the sectors that we will need to keep a uh a watchful eye on. That could include energy, I T, uh public center enterprises, pharma and media. So media is a small one uh uh on the relative terms again, but these are the sectors that despite being in the lagging quadrant are showing a very sharp improvement in the relative momentum. So uh while I just sum up what what we spoke about, there are a couple of factors, a couple of things that we will need to keep in mind over the coming months. So while staying away from making any any kind of any kind of predictive statements, I will just highlight the couple of things that we will need to keep in mind while we are we are out navigating the markets, while we are out navigating the troubled waters. I'll put it that way. Is that uh we need to see Nifty protecting several sixteen eight fifty to seventy zero eighty zone. By the way, seventeen zero eighty is the fifty week moving average and sixteen eight fifty is the twenty week moving average. In between two uh in between this zone, the Nifty has taken a support almost two to three times for over past couple of weeks. So yeah, let's count the this this two hundred point zone make a major support area for the Nifty. On the lower side, if you see them, they are defending and protecting sixteen eight fifty for Nifty would be uh very important and crucial. And we will need to keep a close eye on that. Uh we will need to watch S and P five hundred closely, its behavior within uh three five nine zero and three six four zero. So three six four zero is a small double bottom support, three six nine zero is a two hundred D M A. If this happens, then up move to the hundred week moving average that is around four hundred, uh four thousand one hundred cannot be ruled out if there is a technical pullback. But same thing said in a different context and different tone is that we will need to see that S uh S and P five hundred defends the two hundred day uh week moving average. Any move below that will not uh over well with this broad market index. We'll need to keep a vigil eye on R S line of Nifty against S and B because if we see that uh relative performance of Nifty is falling, it might happen that despite uh the global markets performing well, we might see our markets taking some breather and art markets showing some weaker relative performance. We'll need to see, watch a behavior of dollar index this is fourteen one one four levels because if it is trying to penetrate hundred and fourteen hundred and fourteen point five and fifteen levels, then it may make a very hard push towards hundred and eighteen which would again not over well. But by and large, it is likely to stay stable and also show some uh retresment, but that is something that we will need to keep a very vigil eye on. Um for uh for our friends and investors who are watching us from the Middle East, I would suggest them keeping a a close price on the Salik price moving about two point three five and uh price of Deva moving about two point seven five dirhams, which will lead to a resumption in a move. This is for the benefit of people who are joining us from the Middle East or any investors uh who are interested in the Middle Eastern markets. Uh these are the liquid places to be in. Uh liquidity is, you know, uh it's hard to find in these markets as compared to the rest of the uh uh global market, but these are the places that we'll need to see. Uh we'll also need to keep a very keen eye or 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 very close eye on Dubai financial markets general index, D F M general index, defending the fifty bit movie uh movie average which is presently placed at triple three two. Any move below thirty three hundred may bring some further weakness in that index. So that is what uh and and also confirm the double top that is uh sorry. A lower top that is formed on the weekly charts. So these are the levels that we need to keep in mind so far as T G C uh D F M general index is concerned. So that that brings me to an end of today's session. I bit took a bit longer than uh it was expected. So if you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer either here or or elsewhere. I I I hand it back to Joel. Thank you, Joel, for this.
Thank you so much, Milan. It's always a pleasure to have you share your thoughts, not just about the markets, but about the economy and in fact the world at large. I mean, you and I obviously have a lot of conversations throughout the year, even when we are not uh talking on stage. But it's always a pleasure to kind of look at your very fresh perspective of being sense of the world around us, the markets in particular. There are questions coming in and there are some questions that I think are better saved for our conversation on Discord. But I'll I'll just take this one question which Mohit has asked that I can find very interesting. What do you think about investor sentiment and how how is it unfolding in India vis a vis the world? Especially from the context of your clients. You you have clients around the world, uh both in India and the Middle East in particular. What do you feel that they are looking at in terms of sentiment? You know, uh how is in how are they seeing India vis a vis the rest of the world?
Uh well, uh it's it's pretty good because what I have found and much to my pleasant surprise is that the investor sentiment, uh whether uh the the clients that I have uh in the U A or whether there are clients that I have in India, the sentiment is not that fractured, the way overall the trend uh on the short term are fractured. So in fact, people are scouting opportunities to, you know, uh add few good stocks to their existing portfolio. There are people who are trying to, you know, must uh beginning to invest and and beginning to start investing uh because they are, I think they are wise enough to spot opportunities when the markets are uh are under decline and some amount of fear is there in the market. So yes, sentiment is quite good. In fact, uh speaking on the positive grounds, uh I I have also seen clients asking us to find opportunities to invest in commodities or even to inter invest in country indexes through use of E T Fs. So things are pretty good. They are not as bad as they are made up to be in the, you know, immediate short. It's good. So we we always uh suggest man that you may not go all out buying things, but of course you can start, you know, deploying ten percent, fifteen percent of your available cash at this.
You make a very good point there, Milan, about uh the probabilistic understanding to money management and position sizing. I think that's something that we need to be careful, especially like they said, when there's blood in the streets.
Absolutely.
And especially as uh and in developing markets as the U S D gets uh continues to get stronger, you said that you find that that will ease off for a bit. I think it's a good time for us to start looking at new investment opportunities in that context. Do you agree?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because there's a time when you, you know, buy good things for your portfolio. You will not go out and buy, start your portfolio when the sense is at sixty thousand or fifty is at nineteen thousand. These are the times where, you know, the smart investors will definitely step in, smart plus professional investors both combined. Retail makes, retail people tend to falter at at this level, but so be it. This is how it I I mean things goes.
Which makes sense, but I would just differentiate it as disciplined versus undisciplined investors. And I think uh there's a lot to be said about a process in such times that uh the can will tend to hold us in good stead for our investing career throughout.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Milan. Once again, we really appreciate you always. And I look forward for everyone who's on the call right now as well to please join us on Discord in the in the base camp videos uh video channel where we have a conversation after Alex and Tyler's session and we take more questions. There are already Milan, some other interesting questions that I'd love for you to touch on, right?
Sure.
So on that note.
You're there.
Thank you so much once again.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And here are a few comments that I want to share just for everyone's benefit on what's going on with the C M T Association in Asia. And one of the things that I'm incredibly proud of about our growth in the past uh in the past five years that we've had a formal presence in the Asia Pacific region is that we've seen not just an interest in technical analysis grow across the region, but more specifically with the with the C M T program as well. We uh in twenty nineteen, Asia crossed North America as the single largest continent in terms of test takers. In twenty twenty, India crossed the U S as the single largest country again in terms of test takers. And so as a result, what happened is that the board has acknowledged, the board of the directors of C M T Association has acknowledged the value of technical analysis and of the C M T program within the financial services industry, especially in the Asia Pacific region. And with that in mind, was constituted the Asia Pacific Committee, Subcommittee of the Board. And that is a team of senior professionals from around the region who are working hard to take forward the mission of the C M T Association as the world's foremost credentialing and advocacy body for technical analysis. So these fine gentlemen represent the various uh subregions, if you might, of the C M T Association across the Asia Pac mega continent, if you might. And of these, Akshay, Vishal and Jigar are all based in different parts of the Middle East and South Asia. Jigar is based in Dubai and works very extensively as both a money manager and a volunteer for the C M T Association. We're going to take this mission forward, bringing, elevating the dialogue around technical analysis. And that's something we're very keen to see grow as well. So for everyone on this call and everyone who will be watching this recording on YouTube going forward as well, the link to the session is up already on the on the streaming channel. And you can watch the recording there. You can you can continue this conversation on Discord. But these fine gentlemen are also available to participate in conversations to help you with your initiatives towards both learning technical analysis and in a sense spreading the gospel around uh the discipline. With that in mind, I want to also talk about something that Milan touched upon, the Asia Pacific Summit Experience. We are so excited that this is the first time we are back in person after the global pandemic in this region, in the Asia Pacific region. And with that in mind, we thought, why not take the best of both worlds? There is no substitute to actually shaking a warm hand and smiling uh with your fellow market practitioners, your market technicians. And yet, the online world and the the global pandemic taught us this, gives us so much more opportunity to make the best of share, the ability to share knowledge and network with each other, get to know each other even before we get to the summit in person. So with that in mind, how we thought of the summit experience was to have a virtual component and an in-person component. The virtual component does not limit itself only to the day of the summit, the fifth of November. But you also have a virtual uh and because we we call our event the summit, you said why not have a base camp? An event where a series of events or an experience where you acclimatize before you reach for the summit. And with that in mind, our senior volunteer leaders, um Mohit Handa, Milan, Viraj Vyas have all worked to create a lot of very interesting content in the lead up to the summit, which I invite everyone to engage with on our Discord server. So if you haven't been to Discord yet, it's form it's shaping up to be a wonderful place where we can all connect, not just via text, but also via video channels, by uh being able to access archival videos, live events and all kinds of experiences. So I definitely encourage everyone to be there. And if you can, if you happen to be in Mumbai on the fifth of November, or rather if you make the effort to plan a trip to Mumbai if you aren't here yet, the fifth of November is going to be a day to remember. With very senior global board members, market practitioners and legends from the the world of technical analysis all together in one space, taking forward this common theme. I had the pleasure just this afternoon of speaking with the chief economic advisor of the government of India, Dr. V Ananta Ageshwaran, who also will be sharing his thoughts at the summit. It is going to be an event that really helps us to take the discipline of technical analysis and make it part of the very essential investment language of every investor, irrespective of whether they're professional or retail investors. Why should we participate? I always look at these four core pillars. The ability to learn more, to network with your peers, to grow your career through that and to also enhance your personal brand. That is something that I definitely encourage everyone to kind of think of when you are signing up for the summit. With the base camp, like I mentioned, Discord has proven to be a wonderful space for us to really take the, you know, the best parts of the virtual world and have it merge with the real world as well. And with that in mind, for Discord, I invite all of you to sign up at C M T A dot F Y I slash Discord. Once you log into Discord, come to the register channel and when you register, you will get access to a number of channels that are accessible to participants at various degrees of sophistication. If you are already a member of the C M T Association or you are a candidate of the C M T program, you also get access to these premium channels where you have people who are already going through your C M T journey, this C M T journey with you. So this is something, once again, I definitely encourage everyone to participate in. Networking. On the right hand side of the Discord window, you will as once you log in, see the folks who are currently online and folks in what stage of their C M T life they are in. And you'll be able to reach out and engage with them as well. And I definitely encourage you all to attend the various sessions that we already have planned for you. You will find the link to the calendar up on the top left corner of the the server. And with that in mind, we'd love for all of you to join. This is a screenshot from a session that Tyler and I recently conducted. And we'd encourage all of you to join in more and more of these sessions. There are various different formats that we can experience and enjoy as well. It's going to be a lot of fun. So by all means, let's continue to engage beyond just these sporadic events that we have. And apart from that, most importantly, if you would like to join us in person at the summit, please register for the summit. Either on the C M T Association website or you can head directly to this the micro site that we've created for the summit, which is C M T A dot F Y I slash twenty twenty two A P A C summit. So with that, on that pleasant note, see you in Mumbai. And on that very, very pleasant note, let me also welcome my very dear friend and fellow conspirator in all things C M T.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening.
Uh Tyler, your camera seems to have gone black for a second. We quickly turn it off and on.
That's terrible. I was just there smiling and laughing along with you. Try this one more time. Why don't we uh remove me from the stream and then?
Let's do that. And it seems to me, Tyler, if you can hear me, that your video is um still figuring itself out. But meanwhile, the very handsome Alex Cole has joined us. Alex is the founder and CEO of Go No Go Charts and has been a such a such a brilliant influence to a new generation of technicians, Alex. Your work with Bloomberg and then your work on your own with Go No Go Charts has been exemplary. And I often talk to folks who are getting deeper into the world of technical analysis that there is so much beauty in creating something of your own. So I really want to ask you, uh Alex, you built the chameleon indicator in the past and now you're working on Go No Go Charts. While Tyler joins in, I'd love your thoughts on what has been your experience and what has been your process in trying to figure out new ways of looking at the markets?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I think that what I got excited about early on in my career was how technical analysis was really the data visualization area of financial markets. And and I think that with data visualization in generally, in general, you can you can add value and give insight to people that perhaps otherwise wouldn't get that information just from the data, right? People talk about it as the democratization of data. And so for me, that was what one of the first things that sort of fascinated me by technical analysis was you can take all of the information that's in the markets and then analyze the price, the current price, which has all that information in it. And we can visually see perhaps a representation of the market action or the supply and demand that's happening on the chart. And then it was just a development of that then for me to try to find a process that was a disciplined process that allowed repetitive uh decision-making that had structure and it had, you know, an intelligent framework within which to make those decisions, working with clients for sort of, I guess, fifteen years or so, um and then coming up with a way to then change the visuals of that so that it was easier for me to understand and hopefully for clients as well. And that's where we ended up then with uh Go No Go Charts, which is trying to take a complete disciplined process of looking at the markets. a complete disciplined process of looking at the markets, but displayed in a chart that hopefully is easier to read.
That makes a lot of sense, Alex. Actually, here's another question that I have in this vein that I often get young technicians asking me. If someone was starting their career of now and were getting introduced to the markets through the lens of technical analysis and want to eventually create something unique, how would you advise that they go about it?
Well, I think the first thing is to is to do all the traditional work, you know, to to read all of the the literature that we have, to go through a program such as the CMT Association. Because, you know, if you if you aren't armed with all of the tools and all of the knowledge, it's very difficult to create something without having understood the discipline in the first place. So I think the first thing is to, you know, is to do the 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 hard work or the, you know, the legwork to make sure that you feel familiar with what you're looking at. And then from there, perhaps you find nuances that work for you or you you understand certain markets. You find whether, what you like to see, what gives you sort of confidence when you're looking at charts. But without that thorough understanding, it's tough to, I think, to make those kinds of leaps forward.
I think the core of your message is very Yoda-esque in that you say patience, young Padawan.
Right, right. I have a guitar teacher that teaches my son and he's sort of always, you know, a lot of people just say, I want to play the guitar. And yeah, just just improvise, man, you know, they. But unless you have the toolkit, it's very difficult to to then create something, you know, musically or in our field as well.
That's wonderful. Alex, I have another question for you while we were just talking about the summit. And when was the last time you were in India?
Oh, well, actually, I have not been in India. So, you know, yeah, we've got to get, we've got to get out there.
That is something to fix, right?
Yes, absolutely. But it was, but like you were saying, the first in-person event in India, the first in-person event for the CMT back in Washington DC was great. I was there for that. So it's exciting to see everybody getting back in person to to learn from from such amazing people. It'll be a great event.
That's that's so true. And that was when we last met, you and I, in Washington DC and in New York. How long have you been practicing technical analysis, Alex? Did you start off as a technical analyst or did you, I'm sorry about that, you know, add this question to it? Did you start off with technical analysis or did you get to it from a more roundabout way?
Yeah, I would say I started off general finance, you know, my, I did a master's in business. There was a lot of sort of financial accounting and and sort of that fundamental analysis approach in my, in my, in my sort of initial studies. And then when I joined Bloomberg in two thousand and five, January two thousand and five, I I was sort of trained in financial analysis, but very quickly, I just got fascinated with technical analysis. So I would say technical analysis has probably been my area of focus now for sixteen, seventeen years. Very, very quickly for me, it made sense. I I it's unfortunate, my father's a math professor and but numbers aren't really my thing. I I love the visual nature. I love to try to interpret and represent what's happening using using the charting, the tools that we have, so.
But that's so fascinating that you say it this way. And, you know, it's always this dichotomy between numbers and having a head for numbers or not versus, like you said, the graphical representation of numbers.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, now, here's, and this is something that kind of has become more mainstream now in the past, let's say, twenty-odd years than it has been for a while. But technical analysis, in a manner of speaking, is a way of quantifying the behavior of the markets, wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's, that's, you know, I talk about the visual nature of it, but I think we've suffered at the hands of some critics who've said it's subjective because of that. But that couldn't be further from the truth because the reason you were able to use the chart to understand what's happening in the markets is because of what's actually happening allows you to to do those things on the chart. And I think that we've done a lot of work in the last twenty years, not we, but the field of technical analysis to to quantify, to backtest, to give validity to the things that we've all sort of known has value and people have used in the industry for so long, but we've done a lot of work in quantifying it. And I think that that's been really powerful for advancing the field of technical analysis. But I think to your point about the, you know, the ability to see numbers, I think, I guess that's how you might phrase it. You, the ability to see numbers rather than just try to, you know, if you imagine a table of data with sort of twenty years of of prices on it, it's going to be very, very difficult to see the average, the moving average of that of that data set. Very, very difficult to see if the trend is rising or if the trend is falling. But technical analysis allows you to see the numbers that are underneath the chart. And even with something as simple as a trend line or as a moving average, you know, you can pull out value from a set of data. And that's where the power is for me.
That makes so much sense. I think just being able to take something, I mean, I I would argue that technical analysis was probably the first form of big data analytics. I mean, today, we we talk of big data as a byword, but wasn't it in the late, early seventeenth century that people began to actually think in terms of big data? And just because charts were the simplest way of representing that information, it it became the first way that people began.
Yeah, it's so fascinating. We can have a, you know, a two-hour session on this. My father worked for IBM back in the sixties. And and that was sort of their, the first, you know, the first introduction to this idea. And he used to work with, they used to call it the big machine in London. And they would punch in numbers into this this computer that was in a room that had to be dust-free and, you know, this massive thing. And they would punch in numbers. And then outward, they would print out this this sort of answer to whatever they were, they were trying to figure out when he worked for British Aerospace. And and then they would chart that information. And and back then, it, you know, really was a way to understand data, to get sort of to distill the value from the big data down to something that the end user can then get value from.
That's true. And one might argue that all the computing power in your dad's office back then, that entire room, is probably contained in here right now.
More, I'm sure.
Wonderful. And with that, on that wonderful note, very philosophical note, we have Tyler Wood back on stage. And let me just quickly introduce Tyler and Alex, we talked about. Tyler is the Managing Director for Global Business Development with the CMT Association. But he also wears this other very fascinating hat as the COO of GoNoGo Charts. And together, Tyler and Alex have been doing some wonderful work in taking real meaningful actionable tools out there to to the investing, the serious investing profession, I would say. So on that note, I'll hand the session over to you, Tyler, Alex. The floor is all yours.
Thank you, Joel.
Tyler, are you still with us?
It would seem to me, Alex, that Tyler's not having a great computer.
Tyler's not moving.
Would you like to maybe, Alex, share your screen and then we can?
Let me load up the, oh, live chat.
He's back. Guys, I apologize. This is, this is turning out to be a very difficult evening for for my computer. So everything's restarted, but you all just froze. Let's, let's try to dive into this. Joel, thank you for that, what I'm sure was very generous introduction, though I couldn't hear much of it. And just by way of introduction, I've been with the CMT Association for well over a decade. And it's really been the the lifeblood of this organization to get together in meetings like this and talk about what's working and what's not working. So I actually just got back from Toronto. We had a great conference there last week. Really looking forward to seeing all of you in Mumbai on November fifth. And as Joel mentioned, during the pandemic, my good friend Alex Cole came to me and said, I've got a new tool that needs to be brought to to practitioners of technical analysis. In part, because it captures all that information, it removes what we like to call analysis paralysis. So let's, let's dive in, I guess, first and foremost, Alex, with the conclusion of today's presentation. Where is the market at right now? What should, what should investors be watching for in terms of market trend? And so our first, you know, before we even get into the subject matter of today's presentation, we thought it would be helpful just to look at the India Nifty Fifty Index to see where we're at in terms of current market trends, how to make sense of what has been very choppy and range-bound for most of twenty twenty-two. Certainly for the rest of the world, we've had much sharper declines, much deeper drawdowns. So Alex, talk to us about this weekly chart of the Nifty Fifty. And and we can run through it even without the the full explanations. Let's answer those three key questions.
Yeah. I mean, we are looking at something that has held up so much better, like you said, and as Milan said earlier, than most of the global indices. And we'll look at some of those probably as we go through the presentation. But what we're looking at right now on our chart and what we'll talk about as we go through this is how we blend technical analysis to color-code the chart to tell us what's happening from a technical perspective and allowing us to still look at the chart and use some traditional technical analysis. And that's exactly what we've got here. On the right side of the chart, you can see that we're painting amber bars. And those are our bars of uncertainty, if you like. And so when you see those amber bars, the indicator is having a hard time painting either go trends, which are positive bullish moves or bearish no-go trends. And you can see that we did rally over the summer out of a no-go trend. We were in purple and pink bars and we rallied out of that into a go. But now we faltered and we're back in amber, amber uncertain go fish bars. We call them go fish because Jesse Livermore said, time to go long, a time to go short and a time to go fishing. So when the market is not clear, we're going to paint those bars amber. But there's some interesting things happening in the lower panel. So in the top panel, we blend as all of the trend concepts that we've found valuable over our years working with clients in institutional space. And in the lower panel, we blend many momentum oscillators into one indicator to give us all of the information we need from momentum, but also to keep our charts simple. And what we're looking at here is that this recent move out of the no-go into the go and then back to amber has caused our oscillator to break above the zero line, which, as you'll learn as we go through this presentation, is super important. The zero line gives us an objective level that we can look at when a price is trending. And then now it has fallen back to the zero line. And we're going to watch that really closely. If the oscillator finds support at zero, then that might be a good thing and we may see a return to those go colors. If it fails to find support at zero, we may well see the amber turn to no-go again. Also, very interesting on the top chart is that because the price panel is fairly unobstructed, there's not a lot of lines on here, not a lot of indicators. You can see that we struggled with that downward sloping trend line and we are now just a bit below that. So that's a real quick, what's happening with Nifty from a go-no-go perspective.
And let's just keep in mind, our our timeframe matters, right? So we're looking at a weekly chart to understand what might be considered more of a primary trend in the Indian markets. And this is the entire year of twenty twenty-one. And here in twenty twenty-two, we've had, we've had a loss of that strong, sharp up move. But we have certainly held up much better than the rest of the world. We can jump down to the daily chart. Again, three simple questions. Where is the trend at? Where is the oscillator at? And then is there anything important happening at the zero line? We've got on the daily basis, if we're going to jump down a timeframe and look for some directional indications, we're still in a, in a weak no-go trend on the daily bars. That's the the pink bars that we're seeing here on the far right side of the chart. We're also seeing the oscillator back at zero. So there's a point of inflection here. Momentum doesn't have directionality right now. We're retesting the zero line from above on that weekly chart and from below on this daily chart. So what we're looking for here is a directional signal from momentum, maybe a leading indicator of where we're going to see price trend take off. The third chart that I wanted to give you all before we really dive into the the educational portion of this morning's presentation is just a relative look at the Nifty against the S and P five hundred. So what you can see here is repeated tests of that important zero line and continued resurgence of positive momentum throughout this relative outperformance of the Nifty against the S and P five hundred. So we're in strong go conditions relative to the US index. We're seeing positive, return to positive again and again as the oscillator finds support at that neutral zero line. All right. Now what I want everybody to do, markets are closed, you're you're done trading for the day. I want you to pull out your notebook, your pencil, and let's talk a little bit about why trend matters to technical analysts and how you can use these charts to your advantage. So let's take, take a look first and foremost at one of the most profound trend-following investors in the world. This gentleman's name is John W. Henry. And you might be familiar with him if you've read the book Moneyball or you've seen that movie, the team of sabermetrics individuals that changed the way they did player recruitment for the Boston Red Sox. That's a Major League Baseball franchise here in the United States. What John Henry brought to the table for the Boston Red Sox and now Liverpool Football Club and everybody else were lessons that he learned in commodities trading, which is that you have to remove your subjectivity. You can't have an emotional bias when it comes to investing. And in fact, that objective or quantified lens that he used in the commodities pits very successfully since the early nineteen eighties was something that worked very well for lots of other applications. And and when you think about it, if you if you just look at the numbers, if you just look at the statistics in the lesson of Moneyball, there were a lot of sort of preconceived notions about who would be a great player for the team. And these recruiting agents were looking at the story or the pedigree or who their dad was. None of that matters. What matters is how often do they connect with the ball? How big are those hits? Can they get on base? Can they round the bases and can they score? And and defensive plays the exact same way. So what we're going to talk about today is how we identify trends, not by the way that we feel, by what we anticipate Fed governors or central bankers to do, not by what we think about the underlying fundamentals of the company, but rather about what is actually happening from a price perspective. So to do that, let's take a look at traditional technical analysis and how we might develop a rules-based approach, a checklist, if you will, to identify when a trend has begun and when a trend is coming to an end. And Alex, why don't you walk us through this this concept of blending technical indicators?
Love to, yeah. So as we know, it's probably the most important thing we can do because if we can identify a trend, we can trade in that direction and we can profit on the majority of the move. We always say that it's simple, but not easy. Now, if you were to start doing this, you probably would just eyeball the chart and you might sort of look to see if price is moving in a discernible direction. Are we seeing higher highs and higher lows? Are we seeing lower highs and lower lows? And then once you've done that, you may want to automate that process because we know that subjectivity and emotions get in our way and cause us to to doubt what we're seeing or to give us all kinds of analysis paralysis. So you may use something like the Donchian channels, which track new highs and lows based on a set period. And if you're familiar with the incredible story of Richard Dennis and the Turtle Traders, this was one of the main entries that they used, the main entry for selecting trades to make. And it just plots a line above and below that follows price rising every time there's a new high or a new low. And so you can see those higher highs and higher lows with something like the Donchian channels. Next, you might pull on to the chart something like Bollinger Bands, where you can plot two standard deviations around a mean. We know that from maths that ninety-five percent of the data should fall within two standard deviations of the mean of any data set. Anything outside of that is going to be really significant and important information. So if you're looking at a Bollinger Band on a chart and then price breaks out of that Bollinger Band, that's pretty significant because ninety-five percent of the time, it's, it's going to be inside of those bands, mathematically speaking, of course, we can't say that ninety-five percent of the times price on a, on a price chart, but you get the idea that an important, something important is happening if price is breaking out of a Bollinger Band. And then, of course, simple moving averages. Who doesn't have a simple moving average on their chart? Milan was talking about the forty-week moving average on the, on the Nifty, I believe, and how valuable that's been. So knowing where price is relative to its moving average is very important. Price above a moving average inherently bullish because price is trading higher than it has in its past. So you can start to add a moving average to your chart. And now you've got Donchian channels, you've got Bollinger Bands, you've got simple moving average, you know, price is above perhaps the simple moving average. Maybe we add something that is a secondary confirmatory indicator. Maybe we add volume and we want to see volume high or relatively strong when you're seeing something happening in the price chart because we know that volume is a way of reflecting market participation or market enthusiasm. So now you're starting to build your process. You've got a new high from Donchian channels. You're breaking out of the Bollinger Bands, perhaps prices above its moving average. Volume is fairly heavy or is is suitable for what you're seeing in price. Maybe you throw on now an indicator panel. Look at something like the MACD and you're looking to see whether MACD is crossing above its signal line and whether they're above the zero level, which is bullish for MACD. So now, by take a breath, somewhere over the left side of that chart, we're starting to get bullish right in there. We've got price breaking out of a Bollinger Band. We're above the moving average. We've got a new high in Donchian channels, right? We've got volume fairly heavy. We've got MACD crossing above the zero line, right? Somewhere in maybe mid-February, we're saying, okay, I feel fairly confident now that a new- a new trend has been identified in the up direction. But what you notice is we're already complicating the chart and making price harder to see. And if you think about this, this is a very basic walkthrough of what somebody might do. You know, most people will add multiple panels on the bottom, will add more moving averages, will, will perhaps, you know, add other things to our chart. And then you end up with a very, very complicated and even overwhelming chart that you're trying to make sense of.
So the name of these tools is go-no-go charts. And if you think about that as a pass fail testing system, if you think about NASA launching a shuttle into, into space, what they are looking for is a, is a highest probability environment. They go through a myriad of checklists to make sure that all systems are go for launch. Same thing applies to investing and using technical analysis in a responsible way means that you're going to look to multiple factors to confirm that indeed that trend has begun. It wasn't an erratic move outside of the norm. We've seen volume confirm, we've seen momentum confirm. That's how technical analysis can really help you stay objective. It's having that robust checklist. However, what we're going to talk about today is that unique problem to technical analysts, which is that as many of us get started in this craft, we're going to go down the rabbit hole, looking for that silver bullet, the one indicator to rule them all. Psst, it doesn't exist. But, but more importantly, adding indicator after indicator, multiple panels, more confirmation, the better, right? The more of these tools that I'm looking at, the more information I've got, the, the more wind at my back when I, when I place a trade. The problem is there are diminishing returns. Oftentimes these indicators are redundant, sometimes even contradictory. They never line up at exactly the same time. And what happens to the individual is those emotions come back in. Start to convince yourself of one thing or another. You've got a high conviction trade and with enough squiggly lines on the chart, you can convince yourself to stay with something that is dragging down your portfolio, ruining your, your profit and loss. And so we want to be able to objectively see what's happening in the markets, but without all of that analysis paralysis. So we come back to the solution, which is exactly what Alex and I were showing you at the beginning of today's session. Some go-no-go charts. And let's just take that top panel, that price panel. What Alex walked us through just these last few minutes about a responsible technical approach. That was very limited. We, we looked at six or seven indicators. What is happening behind the scenes on a go-no-go chart from the market trend perspective is actually a lot more information, but calculated in a simple way that blends the unique inputs into a color-coded chart to identify trend. So we want to own things that are in go trends. We want to stay out of things when they fall to a no-go. Or if you're a long-short portfolio manager, you can certainly use trends to the downside and trade into that no-go direction. But the idea is to capture the understanding of what direction and what veracity those trends have, what strength of the move, and to be able to be patient and stick with winners as they become greatly outsized. But to be disciplined in our risk management approach to get out of trends that end, that become a no-go trend. All right. So to better articulate this point, we're going to look at a little bit of data. This comes from Terrence Odian, behavioral economist. He's won many awards. But they took a look at a large data set, 360,000 day traders that they tracked over 15 years of their trading practice. So I'm asking all of you in the audience, go ahead and shout it out at home or type it into the Discord chat. What percentage of these day traders do you think lost money over that long period? Go ahead, take a second. How many failed in their pursuit to make money year after year? The answer is 87%. Less than a third of 1% of those traders were successful year after year. All right. Follow-up question. This comes from Daily FX. Again, the Odian team doing their research, over 43 million individual trades, looking at 15 different currencies. And my question now is not how many folks won or lost money, but what percentage of their trades were profitable? Okay, we just said 87% lost money, but over 50% of the trades were profitable, meaning they, they understood direction, they had an edge in selecting securities. So the average retail trader has a, has a profit ratio, win-loss ratio of over 50%. Why are they still losing money? And it's that win-loss ratio that then translates into the profit ratio. The problem is that their average loss per trade far outweighed their profitable trades, meaning they hung on to losing trades much longer than they should have and they cut short things that were trending in their direction. They had the edge to pick the correct trade, but they didn't have discipline as money managers. They didn't have a risk management approach. Or they became too behavioral, too biased in their decision-making once those trades were on. And that brings us to the expectancy formula. So if you're going to take away something from today's presentation, obviously we are strong believers in technical analysis through and through. But beyond just understanding markets and being able to read the charts to select securities, you also need to use those charts to help you with your risk management discipline and, and overall money management. So we know that behavior has ruined a lot of traders and it comes back to Nobel laureates like Daniel Kahneman and Amos Tversky, their groundbreaking work in the 1970s around prospect theory, why it is that humans experience much more pain in recognizing a loss than we experience gain in locking in a winner. And so what I, just to get mathematical for a second, if we're looking at the, this chart here on the right, right here is our efficient frontier. Every trading system along this line is breaking even. And if we can devise a rules-based approach or a trading system that's going to be up in this quadrant, the further out to the, to the right than the top, the, the more profitable it's going to be. So let's just check in on a data point here. This is a coin flip, right? In terms of the edge or the strategy that you could bring to, to markets. 50/50 win-loss ratio, right? That's a coin flip, but you can still be profitable as long as you manage risk correctly, meaning that your gains are outsized to your losses, two to one. We can move up the curve at folks like Paul Tudor Jones, who are happy being wrong four out of five times, so long as they can trade so aggressively when they know they are right, that they can capture those greatly outsized gains. They can stick with trends through a parabolic move. That's another way to beat the market. And what Alex and I are here to tell you is there is no one trading system that we would recommend. You have to decide your own timeframe and your risk parameters. But you can use technical tools like go-no-go charts that will simplify your trading decision-making by removing that analysis paralysis. And it's our, our, our other good friend, Mark Abraham, who explains why technical analysis is so important, said that ultimately it's the dollar-weighted collective opinion of all market participants that determines whether a stock goes up or down. And that consensus is revealed by analyzing price. So the other reason that it's so important for us to not have lines all over that top price panel is because we are firm believers in the works of Edwards and McGee, understanding important support and resistance levels or classical chart patterns. Maybe you like to look at Fibonacci retracements and extensions. Maybe you're an Elliottician and you need to track those waves. You need to be able to do that on a very simplified price panel. But you also don't want to give up all of that great information that we can gain from trend indicators. So that's what we're hoping to provide is a clear view on price without losing all that important big data from behind the scenes. So just a quick review, right? Blue and aqua colors are our strongest and the weaker form of bullish go conditions. At the neutral level where all of the inputs, all those blended indicators are giving us a neutral reading, we're calling that the go-fish condition after Jesse Livermore's famous quote. And then in the no-go categories, pink is our weaker form, purple is the strongest form of bearish trending conditions in that no-go. So let's look at a few together. We pulled a few of these charts from a US-centric perspective. We're both here in America at the end of September. So we're coming to the end of the, the quarter. On a daily basis in the S and P 500, you can all shout it out with us. We're in strong no-go conditions, right? Deep purple bars as, as that relief rally rolled over again. And we're going to talk a little bit about relief rallies going forward. But we know that technical indicators, if they're worth their salt, they're going to work on multiple timeframes. And that comes back to Charles H. Dow 130 years ago, telling us that the market moves in multiple timeframes and that investors come into and out of markets based on their own risk parameters and their timeframe. So that primary trend is going to be driven by the gross domestic product and expansionary or recessionary economy, the underlying fundamentals of the companies that we are investing in from an equity perspective. And then along that primary trend, you'll be able to spot the secondary trend. And this is where a lot of technical analysts have really made hay, which is understanding that human behavior or sentiment will push trends above and below that primary trend that's governed largely by the fundamentals and the macroeconomics. So that secondary period, what Charles Dow referred to in a lot of nautical themes, said the primary trend is like the tides of the ocean. And when we look to the secondary trend, we can see the waves coming into shore. And then of course, there's the minor period or that tertiary trend, which is the very fickle day-to-day movements, the reactions to news. And that minor period may be the timeframe that you're most comfortable trading in. But what I would encourage you, no matter what your timeframe is, is that when you're in doubt, make sure you zoom out. Meaning having a perspective of multiple timeframes going into your trading plan. Even if you're going to trade those very short time periods, you need to understanding, understand the underlying bias of the market. So Alex, if we were to step out from that daily chart and look at, on a weekly basis, what are you seeing for the S and P 500?
This, this is where we get into really good conversations with our clients and having that multi-timeframe perspective is so powerful. And because it, it keeps you out of getting, I guess, or it helps keep you from getting too excited in the moment, right? We will talk about those relief rallies, as you said, going forward. But the daily chart, when we took this in, at the end of September, was in a no-go. The weekly chart is in a strong no-go as well. And even now, the daily, we saw S and P rally into midweek last week really strongly, but still knowing that we're in a no-go on a weekly chart helps us sort of stay calm through the volatility that we see on a daily price chart or even lower. So, you know, if you're looking at these charts now, you know, you're in a no-go on a daily. You also know that your larger timeframe perspective is a strong no-go. You can perhaps drop down a timeframe to something like a 60-minute chart to perhaps look for good entries. And so you can see that trading in the direction of the trend, we talked about that trend identification earlier. If you were only taking no-go entries from the 60-minute chart because you knew that on the daily and the weekly, we're lined up in a no-go, you wouldn't be getting whipsawed by small moves on, for go moves on a, on an intraday chart. So lining everything up like that and knowing where your larger timeframe bias can really help you stay with the, the trend and be on the right side.
And just to, just to back us up for a second, some of, some of our clients that we work with are very large-scale institutional managers. So for them, the weekly period is, is actually what they're trading. What they're looking for on their, their long-term confirmation bias are monthly and even quarterly charts. So when you get to sovereign wealth funds or pension funds that are trading very infrequently, that are moving large pools of institutional capital, for them, that relief rally, right? In July and August, which of course was in go trends on shorter periods, that, that didn't even register to them as something to get excited about because the weekly period is, is actually the shorter timeframe that they're looking at. So just to keep in perspective, right? That the, the markets are an ecosystem and there's no right or wrong way to, to gauge your timeframe and your risk parameters. But just know that in that ecosystem, there are some movers who are very slow to compile a position, very slow to get out as well. Now, we've just been talking about equities. Of course, Alex and I are, are students of the markets and, and of the CMT program. We love the works of John Murphy, but also folks like Marcos Katsanos, who have taken the early works, intermarket approach that John Murphy articulated, and then quantified sort of what those correlations are between the asset classes, how, what we can rely on and what historical precedent can tell us about those shifting maneuvers. So Alex, let's do a quick round robin of all the major asset classes, just to see what's, what's happening from a go-no-go trend perspective.
Yeah. And again, these were from the end of September, at the end of the quarter, but not too much has changed. You can see that we were in a strong no-go for US equities, a strong no-go as well for US treasuries. Remember, those are bond prices which move inversely to rates. Rates have of course been, been moving higher of late. US oil in a strong no-go, that has moved around a bit since then. We, we may have some charts on that later. Bitcoin is in a no-go trend. Gold, a strong no-go and the dollar, a strong go. And what's so important about taking this kind of, you know, cross-acid approach and so quickly just being able to sort of confidently say, well, listen, equities are, are in a no-go. If you're talking to clients, we're looking at the dollar because that's in a go. You know, have been able to just get this quick sense of where we are from a trending perspective around the world and around the assets is very, very powerful because some things just jump off the screen, right? We know we're in a rising rate environment and everybody's been saying that gold should therefore be a flight to safety. But just looking at the charts, we know that gold has not been that flight to safety this year. We've been in a strong no-go trend for this entire year.
And, and we work with a lot of registered investment advisors, so client portfolio managers who traditionally have been in a 60/40 asset allocation model, meaning equities and bonds. And they structure the portfolio based on some risk parameters. What doesn't work for registered investment advisories is to stick with some tried and true, you know, diversification methods. When both bonds and equities have been moving in no-go trends all year in 2022. We've seen a lot of those financial advisors and, and client PMs really kind of struggle with allocation to alternative asset classes like the commodities or even just holding more cash in their portfolios as an outperforming asset class in this, in this environment. Now, Ray Dalio used to say cash is trash. He has since changed his, his tune. And I think Milan said it so well. He said, we are not here to forecast. We're here to react responsibly to what the market is giving us. And so by using some data visualization tools and capturing all of that trend information, all that combined blended technical indicator that composite information, we can even strip out the price panel and just look at the trend colors so that we can compare across asset classes in a quick view. Right? So this is our US equities panel, government treasuries, the TLT is an ETF, US commodity index, as well as the US dollar. And it just jumps off the page. How we did have some rotation into stronger trends in bonds and equities earlier in this summer, but it's really been the US dollar that has held up the best throughout the year. And we can see that roll over into no-go trends quickly as, as we entered this, this fourth quarter. All right. Now we're going to talk about the core of today's presentation, right? We've, we've understood trend, we've understood the importance of technical analysis to be objective. But what our clients have always told us is that they are not seeking just absolute return. For them, their relative performance is what they are measured on. It's how they do against their benchmark. And everybody has read the same stats that we have. It's 88% of institutional money managers who don't beat their benchmark every year. It's very difficult to beat the benchmark. And so it's those with, with skill, with risk management, who are actually able to outperform the, the, the yardstick, if you will, that they're measured against. So taking from Martin Pring, frequently cited author in the CMT curriculum. He talks about relative strength as just a simple concept that measures the relationship between two securities. That's any two securities. And we're just simply dividing one by the other to understand that relative strength can help us identify those relationships between intermarkets or between asset classes. All right. So let's do one together. Growth versus value. That's a frequent topic for all the talking heads in financial news media. And if we were to simply grab a chart of US growth equities and a chart of value shares, we could eyeball these two charts and say, all right, leading into the 2020 pandemic, right? This is through the end of 2019. We saw the rally in growth equities, followed by a deep plummet into the COVID collapse, and then we rallied out again. All right. Same thing for value equities, rallied into the pandemic, crashed and then rallied out. So if we're just comparing eyeball to eyeball, they look about the same, correct? Well, we can use a relative strength line, dividing growth equities from value shares to understand where that outperformance is. They're not the same, not even close. And so when we divide growth over value, we can see that growth equities significantly outperformed value shares leading out of the COVID pandemic. We actually can see that they began to outperform well before the COVID collapse. So when we think about growth equities, these long-duration companies in the information technology space, in the consumer discretionary space, in the communication space, right? That stay-at-home trade had begun before the, the broad indices even sold off in the COVID collapse. Investors understood, or the market was telling us that a lot of those stay-at-home technology trades were already beginning to outperform before the rest of the index fell off the cliff and before we even recognized what a deep global pandemic this was. All right. So now we can All right. So now we can look at areas of relative outperformance and relative underperformance from growth equities over value. Right here in 2021, right around the turn of the year, we saw interest rates beginning to spike higher. And those growth equities became less attractive compared to their cyclical or value-based components. And now here we are in the year 2022. The, the entire first half of the year has been a strong outperformance for value-based shares or the cyclical sectors of our index over the growth counterparts. And that, that's really what we're looking to do is hold the assets that are outperforming on a relative basis. Now, just looking at the relative strength line, that's great. But what if we could understand the trend of a relative strength line? So here's growth versus value on a daily basis here through the end of September. As we can see, right, growth underperforming value really throughout the entire first half of 2022. That relief rally that we experienced in the summer was led by mega-cap technology names in the information technology sector. Growth equities outperformed value. And here into September and now October, we're seeing that return to more defensive and cyclical sectors of the market. All right, let's keep going, Alex.
Yes, sir.
Utilities versus technology, maybe utilities might not be the most entertaining sector to talk about at cocktail parties. But, but talk to us about what we're seeing on a weekly basis for this relative strength chart.
Yeah, it's just to hammer the point home that relative strength is so important. And you can look at the trend of that relative strength, right? So just think about it, remember that you can put on a relative strength ratio on a chart and do your normal technical analysis, right? So you can run through your process using the relative strength line as the, the chart you're looking at. But then you can use hopefully something like go-no-go charts to keep that really simple. And in this case, we're looking at utilities versus technology on a weekly basis. And you can see what Tyler was just talking about, the underperformance throughout the pandemic. This is remember, this is a weekly chart. So the first sort of three quarters of this chart is those couple of years where technology was really leading us out of that pandemic crash or even into that pandemic crash. And we saw that stay-at-home trade work so well, but it really changed. And you can see that it changed the beginning of the year. You can see how we hit that low. And then the trend of this relative strength changed. And we see utilities outperforming on a weekly basis, this longer timeframe trend. We've seen a really nice, strong go trend in this relative strength ratio. So you can see that change, the, the sort of market dynamics change. You can see that rotation, you can see the regime shift from a growth-based market to something that is much more value-centered at the moment, or has been for much of the year.
And of course, everyone has been talking about energy versus everything else. In the equity space, the XLE is the ETF that tracks the energy sector of the S and P 500, outperforming really for multiple years now, highest performing sector in 2021. And then through the first half of 2022, it was really the only place for portfolio managers to be allocating client money. That was where all of the alpha was being captured. Now, of course, we, we don't see a lot of our clients becoming that concentrated into one, one sector. When you have a momentum trade that's working, tends to, tends to really eclipse any kind of diversification needs. But this is where the alpha was being captured. And then we made it to the halfway point of the year, we lost our go trend. We have resumed here at the end of, end of the summer and into the fourth quarter.
And if you looked at this chart now, I looked at it the other day. If you look at this chart now, we had that amber bar at the end of September, which was sort of saying, okay, we're not sure what's going to happen here. But it went back to go trend and we've raced back higher again. So that trade is working and we're actually testing the, the highs from back in, where, where is that? I guess that's end of June where that trade, that trend really hit its ultimate high. We're back testing those levels now. So you can see the trend, the relative strength of energy to the S and P has come back into favor, having hit that couple of amber bars when we were looking at it in September. Never became a no-go, went back to go bars and is now testing those highs from mid-June. So that no-go correction, well and truly sort of put in the rear, rearview mirror.
Absolutely. So now if we wanted to take a look at all of the sectors of the S and P 500 and do a little tactical asset allocation work, we would want to compile this into a very simple view. So we could understand the relative trends of each sector against a benchmark, but at a quick glance. And so what's great about data visualization is that you can compile a ton of information, which would otherwise be overly complex to the human mind, right? Can you imagine table after table after table of every sector relative to the S and P with all the indicators baked in? It would just be a mess. But using some data visualization techniques, we can look at a lot of information just at a glance. So our top three sectors here, information technology, consumer discretionary and communications. The, the growth-oriented sectors of the S and P 500. So far, it's only been consumer discretionary that's holding up. And of course, we could debate all day long about the composition of, of sector ETFs and, and even the weightings in the index as a whole. But we can see that consumer discretionary is holding up very well. Names like Home Depot and Lowe's and Tesla really outperforming on a relative basis. Middle segment, we've got the industrials, the energy financials. And that's really our cyclical sectors of the marketplace. And then down here, we've got materials, healthcare, staples and utilities. Obviously, defense has been on the field all year long. We've seen some, some really strong relative outperformance recently from those most defensive sectors. So that's, that brings us to the end of the first half of this presentation. And what I want to do right now is actually pause and just check in with my brother from another mother. If we've got time to go through a lot more charts, if, if people are still hanging in, or if we want to kind of wrap it up here with just a few live charts. How are we doing on time, Joel?
Very good, Tyler. We can take maybe another five to seven and then we can meet everyone in Discord.
Perfect. That sounds great. So for everybody who's been paying attention, hopefully that really helps solidify your understanding of market trends and how you could use a blended approach to understand the weight of the evidence, the technical indicators, but compute those in the background. What Alex and I had put together for you, you know, in even longer presentation, would cover the complete go-no-go chart solution. So not just price and trend indicators, but also jumping down here to look at momentum, volume and volatility. And in the interest of time, we're not, we're not going to go through all of this today. But we know as technical analysts that we could use the same approach of blended technical indicators on the momentum side with volume and to better understand volatility. So Alex, why don't we jump ahead? And we'll just talk about those, those three questions that we have to answer for any, any chart to get a complete technical picture.
Yeah. And this was so exciting, or it is so exciting for me, being in the position that I held at Bloomberg meeting with clients and trying to, you know, quickly give them an understanding of technical analysis. What we found is we can boil it down to these three things. If we can answer three questions, then we can have a complete overview of the technical analysis on any asset, on any timeframe and have really, you know, an intelligent conversation about trend, momentum, volume, volatility, just from being able to simplify it down to these three elements. So we're going to look over the, just a couple of charts at where the trend is, where the oscillator is, and if there's anything interesting happening around the zero line. That's really what we need to focus on. And if we roll back to this chart that we started with, you can then see the full, the full suite of tools in action. We're looking at the Nifty on a weekly basis and we're seeing those amber go fish bars. So already we know there's some uncertainty and that this new go trend is struggling. And there's a bit of an inflection point here, what's going to happen next? Where's the oscillator? The oscillator is at zero. That means that we don't have a ton of directional momentum. There's not any pull either in positive or negative momentum from our blend of those oscillators that we've got into this panel. And so is there anything interesting happening at the zero line? Absolutely. The oscillator is testing the zero line from above. Now, if we had time to get into the full presentation, but what, one thing that I just want to touch on here is that when a trend is in place, momentum should stay on the side of that trend. That's the key thing to take away from this complete chart. So when you saw that go trend throughout the whole first three quarters of the chart, you can see how the oscillator was at above or at zero for the whole time. And once it struggled to stay above zero, then that was a concern for the go trend. And then we saw no-gos and then we were below zero. Now we broke above zero, we've seen go bars, and now we're testing that zero level again. So if that zero level can hold for the Nifty on a weekly chart, we may well see a return to those go bars and perhaps a break above that downward sloping trend line and attempt to take out those prior highs. If the oscillator fails at zero, then we may well struggle and go back to no-go. So that interplay between the zero line and the oscillator with the trend is what gives us a complete picture of, of technical analysis.
Extremely well said. And there's, there's a lot of great stories about Alex and I's, our experience with trend and momentum and all of the great folks that we have learned from over the years. Looking forward to sharing those with you at a future presentation. As we talked about at the beginning, on the daily basis for the, for the Nifty, we're in that weaker no-go trend and we're testing the zero line from below, meaning we have been rejected back into a no-go trend. We've had negative momentum, enthusiastic selling, and we're coming back to retest that zero line. All else being equal, when the trend is down and our momentum oscillator, the go-to-go oscillator is in negative territory, we should be seeing resistance at zero. So it's very telling, there's a lot of information. If the resistance doesn't hold and we break through to the upside, then the, the concept of polarity tells us that once above zero, right? Once resistance has been broken, it becomes support. And that gets right back to that human psychology that, that we know and love so well. Let's rip through just a couple of charts. Infosys, very popular for, for all my brothers in, in India. On a weekly basis, we are in a strong no-go on Infosys, the oscillator is at zero. And we are testing from below on heavy volume. One other component built into the oscillator is that volume indicator. So without a secondary panel or a histogram, we just know that we're on heavy volume when we're on this dark blue line. All right, a couple more, HDFC Bank. We are in a daily basis in a weak no-go trend. The oscillator is at zero and we're beginning to build the squeeze, a go-no-go volatility squeeze that tells us a lot about topping and bottoming formations, about that tug-of-war between buyers and sellers when momentum remains at zero. Reliance Industries, I know it's starting to sound like a broken record. We've got a lot of weaker no-go signals here on daily charts for some of the most highly traded equities in India. We're again, weak no-go, we're at zero and the go-no-go squeeze is beginning to build as we have sustained neutrality in the momentum readings. Excuse me. Tata, we're in on a weekly basis, strong no-go conditions. The oscillator is at negative one. So we're, we're in a little weaker position here as it has remained negative through these, through the multiple weeks in this no-go trend. If we jump down timeframe to the daily chart, Tata is in a weak no-go. And we've actually broken positive on the, on the oscillator. We're at a plus one, obviously a very strong rally today. I think the point that Alex and I have made over and over again on our weekly show on Stock Charts TV and in many, many presentations to clients and, and prospective clients is that relief rallies can be very tempting. So we, we see a series of lower highs and lower lows. And despite that, what, what begins as a very seductive, very high volatility move to the upside, investors get extremely excited about those bear market rallies because it's like the good cop, bad cop routine. As my co-host on the CMT podcast, Dave Lundgren, recently published. It's, it's been so painful to be in this bearish conditions in no-go trends that when a relief rally comes along, it's like the good cop coming into the, into the, that scene in the cell. And they offer you a soda and they, they try to be your friend and then bam, they get your, get that confession out of you. So these relief rallies can be very short-lived, they can be highly volatile. And so even a very strong day hasn't taken us out of the no-go trend conditions for Tata here. So we are breaking into positive territory, that's a great constructive signal. And as trend followers, we would look to price as our final confirmation for taking a position. You know what? Let's wrap up today on this relative strength chart of Tata versus the Nifty 50. So if we're going to take a responsible top-down approach, we're going to look at the relative performance of sector groups or even individual securities against other securities in our index or at the benchmark level to understand both a relative and an absolute trend position. So right now Tata's underperforming on a relative basis, also underperforming on the absolute basis. And with that, my good friend, Joel Panikot, let's, let's wrap this session up and we'll look forward to, to joining again really soon.
You're on mute, Joel.
This is one of those, this has become the statement of the, since the pandemic world. And I'm going to have a teacher that says, you're on mute.
Yes.
So this is one interesting question that, that came up on Discord. And this is, this kind of talks to the multi-asset class nature of technical analysis. How does go-no-go charts work on options markets?
The exact same way.
Yep.
Any, any, so we're both firm believers that good, well, all of us, right? All of us that are doing work in this field, we're all firm believers in technical analysis. Should, a good technical analysis process should work on any asset class and any timeframe. So anything where there is a data set, reliable data, you can look for trends. You know, I had a very interesting conversation with a friend of mine who's, he's, you know, fairly high up at a, at a South American bank. And he was like, well, what if I gave you some data on, you know, something could, could? And I said, yeah, it's a trend identification idea, right? And so whatever the data set is, if there is a reliable source of historical data, you can use technical analysis to get a sense of trend, momentum, volume, volatility. And that should be the case with any good technical process.
And the, the piece that I would add for, for any more sophisticated derivatives traders is that understanding the probabilities of the, of the price action of the underlying securities. So if you're buying options on Nifty 50, you have to understand first how, how the Nifty is behaving. And if we're in an upward trending market, then you, you want to develop your derivative strategy accordingly. So I think where a lot of options traders really get wrapped around the axle is that they have more, more and more sophisticated strategies for how they are structuring their options. They don't understand the trend of the underlying securities. So you can keep your technical analysis very simple on the underlying in order to develop more sophisticated option strategies. So that's, that's the only piece I would add there.
That's wonderful. That makes a bunch of sense. Thank you so much, Alex, Tyler. This has been an absolutely rewarding session. And for everyone who's joined in and will continue to watch this recording over the next few days and weeks as we leave up for the summit, we have a lot more coming up in the Basecamp series as well. I welcome everybody to not only meet us on Discord, either basically we can have a quick conversation in person, but also to follow these sessions. Our next session in fact is on the 13th of this month in three days' time with the wonderful Julius DeCampana, the inventor, like these two fine gentlemen, of another very powerful tool, the relative rotation graph. So I welcome all of you, I'll see you on Discord. And for now, we'll bid, bid everyone on YouTube, a very good evening.
Thanks so much, Joel.
Thank you.